The City Council Committee on Ordinances and Legislation will not come to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Kadim?
Here.
Counselor Dion?
Here.
Counselor Lee?
Here.
Counselor Pereira?
Here.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We have two citizens, item one is citizens' input, and we have two submitted by email. This one is from Rebecca and Tyler O'Neil, 227 Ames Street. "Greetings, I am homeowner here in the city. I have a two-family home with eight people, including myself. My tenants have three children ages four and under. I'm sure you can imagine the number of diapers they go through. For over a year, my husband and I have been reaching out to the DPW time and time again, requesting a second trash barrel, a green barrel. Several months ago, my husband was successful in acquiring a second recycling bin as a compromise. We have been told time and time again that we simply cannot have a second barrel because we do not have a big enough house. I have told people from this, I've had people from the city tell me that it was due to ordinances regarding trash barrels, but we looked it up, there was actually no ordinance regarding this specifically. So we persisted, and because I have to transport my household trash somewhere else to get rid of it, because I can't put it in the barrel that we have at the house, it simply doesn't fit, and we received citations. Mr. Perry has told me that it is actually a DEP code that the city is attempting to adhere to. I looked at the DEP website yesterday, and I would really appreciate it if someone could enlighten me as to the specific code that is being followed. At any rate, I'm hoping the number of trash barrels can be visited as a subject tonight, because I personally think it should have more to do with the number of residents in a home, rather than the number of units in a home. Mr. Perry told me yesterday that he gets about a dozen calls like mine every day. If that many residents are complaining, shouldn't something be done about it? Thank you for your consideration." Second item, it's from Colin Diaz, 560 Ray Street, Fall River, Mass. "Good afternoon, members of the Ordinance Committee. First of all, I just want to go on record in support of the compost recycling program. We should see more initiatives like this in our city. Kudos to Counselor Lee for bringing this forward, and I hope to see plans implemented. Now onto some matters which I believe need some oversight. We need an ordinance that addresses a social media policy in our city. We need a lot of the people who can create and access city accounts, along with rules and regulations for social media use. At last night's school committee meeting, there was an in-depth discussion regarding the superintendent's use of official FRPS accounts like Twitter. The superintendent uses Twitter in the name of Fall River Public Schools for personal use. He likes an inappropriate post that was lewd on Twitter. Superintendent Malone also uses Twitter in the name of Fall River Public Schools to promote businesses, not Fall River businesses. He promotes businesses in Rosendale, Dorchester, Quincy, Boston. There was also another page referenced, an @FRPSinfo Twitter page. After research, I highly doubt Superintendent Malone or anyone in the Fall River Public Schools operates this page, because it calls Fall River police officers 'piggies,' and has expletives calling on people to wear your bleeping mask. Again, while I highly doubt this page is operated by the superintendent or anyone in the Fall River Public School system, the Twitter page is followed by the official Derfi High School Twitter page as of yesterday, therefore making this a city concern. Why would the official Derfi page follow this sort of content? Was the FRPSinfo page hacked? There is also a selfie of the superintendent on the page. I believe these are questions we need answered. I am very confident that the City Council will get to the bottom of this. It's another block cloud over our city. Thank you very much for your time, Colin Diaz."
I'd like to make a motion that that letter be sent to the school committee, and that people are aware of the fact that the City Council does not have jurisdiction over the school committee, and we cannot implement any policies, we can't implement policies here, let alone the school committee.
Second.
So, that's what I think. I make a motion that it be referred to the, sent to the school committee members.
Motion made by Counselor Pereira to refer this letter to the school committee, seconded by Counselor Lee. Any discussion? Counselor Kadim?
No.
No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Madam Clerk, are there people signed up for citizens' input?
Yes, you had a, oh, I was gonna say, you had a listing.
Thank you. Reagan Gibney, 213 Belmont Street, and the subject is balloon releases.
Start with Clara.
Okay. Clara Mason, 3 Whirland Green Drive, and the subject is balloon releases. Can you just go right up to the microphone?
Hello, my name's Clara Mason. My class and I have been working on an argument to ban balloon releases. The city of Fall River needs to ban balloon releases. We at first wanted to do wildlife protection here in Fall River, but after what we, after we saw what balloon releases do to the animals that we want to help and protect, we decided to try to ban balloon releases. Balloon releases cause ocean woodland pollution. It doesn't only hurt our city, but it also hurts the other cities and towns around us. Speaking of the other cities and towns around us, many cities, states, cities and towns have already banned balloon releases. If we don't ban balloon releases, they'll keep hurting and polluting our environment. The animals will eat the balloons and they'll choke. Even balloons that are biodegradable can survive in water for six months up to four years. We, the youth of Fall River, don't want to stay here if our city is dirty. If the city is dirty, we'll want to leave for cleaner cities and towns. We, the youth of Fall River, want to see our city clean, and we want to see the step taken to keep our city clean.
Thank you. Ms. Blanchard, am I following the order in this? Julia Edge, 27 Hood Street, and the subject is balloon releases.
Uh, hi.
Right up to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Julia Edge. The big question we are asking is why aren't balloon releases all way considered at all? Throwing a cup on the ground would be considered at all?
Excuse me, one second. Ms. Blanchard, could you move that microphone down? Thank you.
The big question we are asking is why aren't balloon releases all the way considered at all? Throwing a cup on the ground would be considered at all? And we would, and we would get $500 fine, but releasing helium balloons into the sky isn't considered at all, even though it's still polluting our environment. A standard 11-inch latex balloon will float for about 10 hours to five days, and then start to fall down. Depending on the wind direction, that balloon can travel thousands of miles away from the spot they were released in. And like Clara said, animal might eat its food and pass away. We understand that it's for our lost loved one, but you shouldn't pollute our city, neighborhood cities, the water and within areas. There are a lot about alternative which are good for the environment, and our classmates are going to talk about later on, and we thank you for listening.
Thank you. The next member is Hope La Liberty, 478 Osborne Street, and the subject is balloon Right up to the microphone.
My class and I are doing Generation System, where we are trying to ban balloon releases from having started with Fall River. This petition has 407 signatures, including a few countries, such as Germany and France. I believe this petition is important, because the residents want a clean city, not a dirty one. If we remove balloons in the environment, it will be less harmful to animals and society. When a balloon is released, it doesn't just harm the city, it harms other areas as well. For an example, if we release a balloon in Fall River, it can run anywhere in the world, and we wouldn't know that it's causing harm to animals and ruining life and other things. Plastics such as balloons and more breaks up to something called microplastics that sea creatures inhale, through their gills, and eventually die. For an example, when turtles eat plastics, stars, and can't breathe. The reason why balloon releases should be banned in Fall River is because more than 100,000 animals die every-
Perfect. Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Shania Batello.
Hello, I'm Shania Batello. I'm here today to tell you about the, what issues balloons have caused in our area. There have been many issues in our area, and I have some stories of what balloons have done around our community. One great example of how this impacts Fall River is the story of our nice harbor master, Paul Borges, near the Cove, saw a swan struggling, so he got on a boat and paddled out there, and when he was out there, he waked up the swan and saw that there was a balloon string wrapped around the bird's feet, and it also couldn't move, and probably couldn't help its family. With an iconic kiss, he let the swan go. The next story of that happened in our community near us is in Little Compton. They went in the water cleaning, and when they finished cleaning, by the end of the day, they pulled over 6,000 balloons, and over the next week, 100 more washed up. Who knows how many already disintegrated into small plastic particles, and also how many balloons the animals in the ocean already ate. All those balloons didn't just come from Little Compton, they came from many other places like Fall River. And third and final reason is that in 2019 in Peabody, Massachusetts, there was a Millard balloon that got wrapped around a power line and caused a power outage in a whole district. We hope to see Fall River take these issues seriously and make a change that will have a positive impact for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person has signed up is Kiara Estrada, 270 Setson Street.
I'm Kiara Estrada, and what I'm going to present to you today is alternatives to balloon releases. Fall River has a lot of alternatives to balloon releases that a lot of people don't know about. For example, a big one that's not mentioned is the Fall River Street Tree Program. More details on it are on the poster and brochure we made. But that's not the only alternatives. There are also many others like candle lightings, memorial gardens, and many more.
Next person is Reagan Gibney, 213 Belmont Street.
Hi, my name is Reagan, and I'm here to represent my class. As you know, balloon releases are to honor our loved ones that have passed away, but what you may not know is that it causes more harm than good. These balloons eventually fall back down to the ground and become litter. Animals get caught in the strings, and they eat the balloons, which it doesn't break down in their stomachs, causing them to get sick and eventually cease to exist. We need to pay more attention to these animals and do our best to keep them safe. This is why, instead of having balloon releases, people should try other alternatives, such as planting a memorial tree. There is a program right here in our city called Fall River Street Tree. This program is open to all residents of Fall River. You can get a free tree on whatever tree you would like, as long as it gets approved. And if the tree you want costs money, then the program will pay for half of it. Memorial tree is something that you can take care of, and has way more meaning than releasing balloons, and you can regrow the tree. We need to find a way to make this program known to all the residents of Fall River. We, as a class, also think the city can expand this program by getting free flowers added to it, so residents can make memorial flower gardens. I really think getting rid of balloon releases and trying to get a tree instead is the better option for the community and the animals around you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is that it? Everybody have signed up?
Yes.
Thank you. Item two is minutes from the March 23, 2021 meeting.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Lee, seconded by Counselor Dion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Madam Chairwoman, just before we move on, I know the last ordinance committee, we had some more students from more in school come before us, and, you know, I know we said it then, that we thanked the students for coming before us, you know, it's not easy to public speak, so it's very challenging, and quite frankly, a lot of us here don't like to public speak, so we know how difficult it can be, but we really want to thank you and the class for, you know, trying to get involved specifically with different aspects of local government, trying to make a change. So we appreciate everything that you've done, everything you've said, and it takes a lot of courage, especially at your age. I know public speaking and coming up in front of audiences are not very fun to begin with, so thank you.
Item three is minutes from the April 6, 2021 meeting.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Lee, seconded by Counselor Dion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item four is proposed ordinance, water and sewer rates, referred April 6, 21.
We just have Mr. Ferland come up.
Mr. Ferland?
Good evening, Counselors.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you would like, I'll run-
Go ahead, Mr. Ferland.
Yes, thank you. Tonight in front of the ordinance committee, you have both rates for the sewer division budget, and also the water division budget. If you'd like, I'd, I'll start with a brief overview of the sewer division budget. The sewer division budget this year for FY22, proposed budget, is $26,325,000. The budget has a rate increase of seven cents per CCF for sewer, and $1 per quarter per ERU for stormwater. That would make a sewer rate of $5.66 per CCF, and a stormwater rate of $47 per quarter This budget includes use of retained earnings in the amount of $1,929,000, $929,297. So that's one-time money plugged into this budget, which was retained earnings from last year to reduce the rate increase.
Mr. Ferland, can you repeat that? $1,929,297.
Yep, $1,929,297. Thank you. And that is all of the retained earnings that was certified in FY21. The, some of the increases within this budget, the major increase within this budget was a debt service increase. So what the debt service increase, and we always talk about this, but this is when we bond out a project, we get authorization to construct a project, we go out, we construct a project, we construct that project typically with loans. The loans then need to be repaid, so the debt service that we talk about all the time here in front of the council is the repayment of those loans. So this year, our loans increased by $1,680,451. So that was the amount that it increased from prior fiscal years of loans that need to be paid back during the FY22 budget. Some other increases that were within the sewer division, sewer division line items would be, the other major one that we had in there was under our other professional services line item, under sewer treatment plant expenses. That is the O&M contract for our contract operator of Veolia that operates our wastewater treatment plant, as well as the operation and maintenance of our collection systems. So those were the two large increases in the FY22 budget. Do we want to stay with sewer, or would you like me to?
So, Counselor Pereira?
Yeah, I'd like to ask some questions on the sewer, on violating its contract. How many people are they supposed to have working, per contract?
Under contract, we're currently contracted with them for 50 employees.
For 15?
Fifty, five zero. Yes.
And how many employees do they have?
It varies month to month, as people come in. Typically, I would say their average is anywhere from 46 up to 48. It, you know, it's always tough, you have retirements, you have people leaving, the hiring process does take some time. So just, just to note on that, within their contract, any savings from employees, so if we're contracted with them to have 50 employees, they have 48 employees working for us. At the end of the year, when a final audit is done, so throughout the year, we pay for those, at the end of the year, when a final audit is done of that, of that contract, any savings from employees not working, because the positions are not filled, comes back to the city.
And what was that amount for this year?
The amount that we received that was deposited for this year, don't hold me to that, but I believe it was in $150,000. I would have to check.
I would anticipate that it would be more than that, because I followed the year on what the employees, that they have. The other thing is, they have their own employees, plus they have city employees, but they also hire their own. All 50 workers that they're supposed to have are not city workers. Is that true? Clarify that for me.
Yeah, so underneath, working underneath Veolia for the operation and maintenance of the treatment facility and the collection system, those are all Veolia employees, there's no city employees.
The city employees we had in the sewer department went over to Veolia when we got the contract with them. Am I, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And all the insurance, medical insurance, et cetera, is paid through that contract, not through the city. We contract with them, and they pay for everything.
Correct.
They pay, put in for retirement, they pay for everything.
Yep, all overhead costs of their burden.
Okay. I'd like that figure, to be honest with you, because I know that they didn't have 50. And $150,000 is not a whole lot of money, because those people get paid good money, or should be getting paid good money. I know that they were trying to get rid of their health insurance, and give them a cheaper plan, and there was some problem there. I believe they had a vote, they were almost going to strike, they didn't, but I know that that's still ongoing. So, you know, when do we renew our contract with them, and do we put stipulations in there of what we expect people to get? Or, you know, do you not? That might be something we need to look for, to do, to solidify that if you're contracting with somebody, that they're going to be given a decent wage, and that they're going to have medical insurance, and that they can't switch it, or what have you, because if they're doing the sewer and that's not solidified, what if they do go on strike? Then what happens? I mean, we could be in a mess. I mean, I'm glad that they didn't. I'd like some more information on that, though. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferland?
Excellent. If, like I go, I'll go over the water division budget currently at this time, too, a brief overview, again. So the water division budget for this fiscal, for the upcoming fiscal year proposed, FY22, That does include a rate increase. That rate increase would be five cents above the current rate, to make a rate of $3.48 per CCF. Within the FY22 budget, there was a, there is, again, retained earnings used to minimize the rate increase. That is an amount of $329,524. Again, that is one-time monies that was retained earnings from certified this past year. One of the big increases, again, in the water division was the debt service. This year, Mass Clean Water Trust, which is the, which is the partner with DEP that administers the SRF program, they went out to, to long-term borrowing with a lot of the SRF loans, and that's why there is such an increase in both of these debt services. The increase in the debt service is $235,135. So that's the overall increase in debt service. Some of the other increases that we, that we see throughout the budget would be a $50,000 increase to capital expenditures within the budget. A increase underneath water treatment plant expenses, underneath other professional services, of $14,000. And the debt service, again, as I mentioned. These two rate increases combined in the water and sewer division, in the sewer division would add, per the average household, $7.71 per year to their bill. In the water budget, would add $2.65 per year to their bill for the average household.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Yep. So sewer, $7.71. Water would be $2.65 increase. For a total impact on the customer per year of $10.36 per year. That's a total of 86 cents per month to the average household. And I know every year, I always get the question on what the average household is, and how we calculate that.
2.5 people, right?
Roughly thereabouts, 2.5 people, based on 53 CCF per year. This year, what I did, I took a, you know, a random 20 houses, because I wanted, just for my edification, to see exactly, to make sure that that still had held. I took a 20 houses, was able to determine the amount of people that live within those houses, and I broke down their water uses. Give me a second. So 20 households, there's a mixture of single-family houses, three-family house, a couple of three-family houses, an eight-family, and a two-family within this list. The number of 20 houses totaled up to a total of 38 people within those houses, excuse me, number of units was 38 within the 20 houses. The number of people within those houses was 72. Total per household was 1.9, four-quarter CCF average is 53.15. And again, those are just random houses that we picked, and we were able to get the amount of people that lived within these houses. Tried to do a variation of single-family, multi-families. So I still feel that that is a good average household. Is every household going to be like that? No. You're going to have households with five kids, and they have a pool, and they have a sprinkler system that waters their lawn, and their usage is going to be a lot higher. But for an average household, based on the calculations, I feel that that number is still good. American Waterworks Association actually rates that at a lower number, so I feel that our number within the calculation is good. Just, again, so based on an average with the new rates, with the stormwater fee, sewer fee, base meter fee, and a water user fee. base meter fee, and a water user fee. The average household quarterly bill, based on those numbers, is a hundred and eighty-two dollars and eleven cents. That's per quarter. Total yearly bill would be seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-four cents. That's a one point four percent increase from the current rates.
Counselor Dean.
Thank you. Just on the statistics that you just gave us, can you, so what's the average increase? Was that the average increase or is that the total bill that you gave us?
So, the percentage?
Yeah, the hundred, hundred dollars that you said per quarter, is that what you?
Yeah, so the average.
Was the average bill or is that the average increase?
Nope, the average household bill with the new FY twenty-two rates as proposed would be one hundred and eighty-two dollars and eleven cents per quarter.
So, what would residents that are based on your average projections of the fifty-three CCF per year, what would their? So, the average increase would be that ten thirty-six?
The average increase would be ten dollars and thirty-six cents per.
Per year.
Per year.
For eighty-six cents per month as you listed.
Correct.
I know I'm gonna sound like a broken record, so just bear with me. You know, so every, every time we look at these budgets, you know, from my standpoint, it's the sustainability of these budgets. I know my colleagues are really concerned about rate increases and the impacts to residents with all the taxes that we're dealing with and things of that nature. However, I, I think we do a little bit of a disservice when we use the one-time monies and the retained earnings or free cash, however you wanna describe them. You know, when you're talking about using two million dollars of retained earnings, what does that reflect in a rate increase? So, what are you shaving off the, the increase? Because we're still seeing, you know, if we, so I'm talking about the sewer and I'll focus on the sewer department, but you're using close to two million dollars for the retained earnings on the sewer and you're still seeing a seven, seven cent increase for the sewer usage. So, if we, if we do not use that one-time money coming in, what would that essentially reflect the rate to be then? And while, and while you're doing that, I know I've mentioned this before, but, you know, because from my standpoint, if we don't continuously get this retained earnings in, in the amount of the two million dollars, we essentially create a structural deficit and then when we need to make it up, it is gonna be made up in the rates. And then as opposed to having rates increase maybe ten cents each year, now you're gonna get a year where you're gonna have to go up to, you know, a twenty cent or a thirty cent increase, which is gonna be a significant increase to the water and sewer bills that, that residents are gonna receive, right? So, I think when we're, when we're starting to talk about rates, we need to, to keep in mind that, yes, it looks good to throw two million dollars in there, but again, that's based on the surplus, that, that's based on, you know, we've got COVID situation where, you know, the government wasn't operating to full capacity, so that's where the savings coming in. I don't know, based on the lean budget that you're presenting, that you're gonna necessarily see another two million dollars coming in in surplus in, in the sewer department. So, potentially next year, unless we get some federal aid to, to help offset some of these, you know, the debt associated with the, you know, the fixed costs associated with the debt service or things of that nature, that you're gonna be able to, to keep these rates low unless we do something drastic within the water and sewer department. And I recognize that, you know, if you take out your fixed costs, which are really your, your borrowing that you're doing for the CSO projects, the, and the water department is the infrastructure improvements that we're doing, which is right off the bat adding ten percent, a ten cent increase each year to the rates. We're not seeing any, any debt retiring, right? So, we're continuously adding to the debt. So, we see that level, that level stream of, or actually, the incline of the debt going up as opposed to, to reducing that we would see on the, on the general, on the general fund side. So, those are the things, and I think those are the conversations that some of the counselors had last year, is how do we truly try to minimize the, the impacts to, you know, the taxpayers and the residents on water and sewer, but also provide you with the, you know, the resources that you need to operate, you know, the sewer and water department? You know, I think a lot of times we take for granted, and we can go back to Flint, Michigan, with the quality of the water, things of that nature, and everything that goes into making sure that we've got quality water. So, when we turn on, on the faucet, we've got clean water, it's drinkable, it's usable. But we also wanna make sure that we're, we're doing what we need to do to make sure that we're, you know, being efficient with, with the monies and the operations, which, again, I think it's lean, but it's all the debt service and the infrastructure that we've ignored for years, right? So, so do you, do you have that number?
Yes, so just answer, it's, so if we were not using any retained earnings, it would be an additional seventy-three cents that would need to be added to the rate.
How much?
Seventy-three cents.
Seventy-three cents. So, we, we were talking about potentially eighty cent increase, so almost a dollar?
Yes.
And so, what'd you say the driving factor on that was?
The driving factor of.
For, for the rate increase? Because typically, I, I think we typically see about a, a ten to fifteen cent increase year over year. So, and I know you, you listed off some stuff, so, but what's the real driving?
Yep, so the, so the large driving factor is the debt service. At one point six, over one point six million increase from last year to this year.
Now, a couple of things, Counselor. I am certainly in agreement with you. Using the one-time money is not a smart thing to do, particularly in this particular instance when we're using all of the free cash that was certified. So, although both funds, both water and sewer, have stabilization funds at this particular point, using all of free cash is, is not necessarily a prudent thing to do. Going forward, at least for the next four years or maybe into year five, there will be the opportunity to use some of the American Rescue Plan Act monies for infrastructure, for particularly water and sewer. So, although it's not going to change the debt service as it currently stands this year or even next year, Mr. Ferland and I had a discussion even as late as this morning. Depending on what the administration does with regard to the long-term plan for those dollars, it would definitely level off at least some of the debt service going into twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. And based on both the reading of the guidance that came out just late yesterday and a webinar I was on this afternoon, it appears that as long as the projects are in the queue, so to speak, we will be able to go out further than December two thousand twenty-four for at least water and sewer infrastructure projects. So, it will help going out for future years in terms of rate increases specifically relating to debt increases. But I completely agree with you, utilizing all of the free cash. There is nothing to say in fiscal twenty-one, when we get free cash certified in this coming fall, that we're gonna have another two million dollars available to us.
So, what do you folks, in terms of your outlook and your forecast, so, you know, this is for the FY twenty-two budget, the upcoming budget, what are you predicting for increases based on what you're seeing for expenses and your fixed cost increase with, with salaries and things of that nature for the next three years? Are you, are you looking at a number that's at eighty percent or higher? I mean, not eighty percent, I'm sorry, eighty cents?
Uh, no. Well, again, depends a lot on what the retained earnings are, you know. As you said, and as Mr. Hardy said, and Mr. Sullivan said for years, and myself, once you start using these retained earnings, it's, you know, you're walking on a fiscal cliff there. If you have them one year, you're able to use them. The next year comes, and that was part of the problem where we were last year. We didn't have as large of a retained earnings last year and the rate increases were drastically higher. If retained earnings does not come in, you know, at this level next year, the rate would have to, would have to, you know, a lot of people.
I guess what I'm looking for is assuming that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna build a budget that doesn't use any one-time monies, right? So, if we get any retained earnings, it's gonna go into the stabilization account to build up a rainy day fund to, to help offset that. So, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, is what would the, the year-over-year rate increase be for the next three years to sustain the budget that, and the expenditures that you folks are looking for? So, I know we've got eighty cents if we didn't, assuming we don't use the retained earnings, it's, it's an eighty cent increase.
Yep.
What do we see over the next three years? And I'm not looking for anything to hold you to it. I'm just, I'm just looking for an estimate, as, and I know it's a living document. Are we seeing an eighty cent increase year over year? Is it a fifty cent increase? Is it, does it drop down to a thirty cent increase or?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be year after year if, if we were to say this year, we're not gonna use any retained earnings. So, essentially, we're gonna jump in headfirst and, you know, take care of that and increase the rates eighty cents so that we don't use any retained earnings. Then after that, we would be working with a, you know, a moderate increase as it's always been like, you know, always been requested. Again, I would guess we'd be talking anywhere in the ten to fifteen cent increase. The one thing that we always have to be careful is, would be years like this where one of our bonding agencies goes out and puts everything on long-term in one fiscal year, which did happen this year, happened with some of our city loans because it was, it was an excellent rate to be able to bond on the market. And the Mass and Clean Water Trust did it as well. So, there was a lot of long-term debt that came over and came onto our, came onto our books. So, any year we would have a drastic increase like that would be tough.
And then, just my final question on the water side. What would the rate increase be if we didn't use the retained earnings? So, instead of a five cent increase?
Roughly eleven cents plus the five cents.
Plus the five, so sixteen?
Yes.
I said, I said it was my last question, one more question. The fund balances in the two stabilization accounts for water and sewer, what do you have?
So, stabilization accounts, as of one twenty this year, water has four hundred and nine thousand. Sewer has five hundred and seven thousand. My expectation is to use a hundred thousand dollars in free cash from water and transfer that out before the end of the fiscal year. That's to make up the hundred thousand dollars that we did not transfer last year because we used all the free cash last fiscal year to plug into the budget. Also, take an additional hundred thousand dollar from the FY twenty-one budget in both water and sewer and transfer those into the stabilization account because that's what was in the budget that was approved by this council last year. That would give us, at the end of this fiscal year, stabilization of water and sewer, just about seven hundred and seventeen thousand each.
Thank you. I yield.
Counselor Dean.
Just for clarification, make sure I heard you correctly. So, we look at average household, two point five people, and it's fifty-three CCF for two point five people. You did a random analysis that broke down to one point nine people. And it was fifty-three point one-five. So, fewer people came in at a higher number than the two point five. So, isn't that fifty-three CCF a little underestimated based on your random sampling?
You know, the two point five, again, is, is a national average. How it breaks down in, in the actual city, I don't, I don't know those statistics. Standard household is two point five. Again, this was a random sampling that was taken of houses. Again, I wanted to see, and it's an average household, again. It's not meant to say that this is what every household is or what every household is gonna pay. So, what you say is a hundred percent correct, but the na, what the national average and what our average, the city average breaks down to may be different, so.
It's also a very small sample.
Yeah, correct.
Twenty is a very small sample.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, without a doubt.
But I think the, I mean, I don't know, but I, I think there's more than one point nine people living in most homes and units in this city. And I see, I mean, it was, yeah, it broke out to just that average in a small sample. But it's just the point that I think that's, whether it's a national average or not, I think it's just a tad underestimated, which does affect, which does affect the money and the price in the long run.
Again, as I said, American Waterworks Association, their national average is, is lower than the fifty-three CCF. But then you consider areas of California, Texas, and stuff where they have strict water bans and, and stuff like that. So, you know, that's why we carry a higher CCF average.
Okay, thank you. That I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Lee.
Hello, how you doing?
Good.
Good. Thank you for coming down.
Not a problem.
Could you let, let me know and let people watching know what cost-saving measures specifically you've taken? And, and was there anything different from previous season, previous years or so based on COVID and, and, you know, usage and things like that?
Um, so, yeah. This year, as everybody knows, was a tough year, you know. Twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one is definitely gonna be one for the history books for everyone. Our employees in the water and sewer department had to work straight through the pandemic, as did a lot of other people within society. You know, if, if our operators didn't show up, potentially, people wouldn't be able to open their faucet and have water out or have someplace for the water to go to be cleaned prior to going out into, out into the bay. So, throughout the year, there was a number of, there's always a number of different things that we do. Cost-saving measures, you know. It's tough with, within our industry, we have a lot of fixed costs that, that go out. You know, electricity being some of them, chemicals being some of them. So, to save on any of that stuff, I think we definitely do. Chemicals, we go out to bid every year to make sure that we get the, the best quality prices on the chemicals. We piggyback on the city's rate for electricity to, to use electricity. So, there is things like that, that we're always looking for cost-saving measures. Increasing and replacing equipment, something that we're doing on our sewer division side, going with higher efficiency equipment, newer pump stations, reduction of inflow and infiltration. So, in combination with the CSO projects, that always increases our efficiencies throughout, throughout the whole entire expenses.
In regards to the equipment, was, does that, was that something that you, that we had the debt service pay for?
Yeah, without a doubt. So, so a couple of projects that we're doing right now, the President Ave Pump Station, which is over behind Newport Creamery, next to the President Ave Hoodery. That's a new station that greatly reduces the amount of inflow, so outside water that's able to come into the system. So, reduces our pump times and we also have more efficient pumps in there.
But if that incre, but you said that the increases are coming from the debt service. So, it's sort of like, if the increases are coming from the debt service and the equipment's supposed to be a cost-saving measure, it's not really necessarily playing as a cost-saving measure, is it?
Long-term, it was.
Long-term.
Right, long-term. So, we're replacing a pump station that was from nineteen sixty. You know, well past its, its life, so.
How, you said that you put, you go out for bid for chemicals, you, and you use the same amount of chemicals year to year, would you say?
Yeah, so roughly thereabout. You know, our pumpage at both the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant has ta, stayed pretty steady. Occasionally, we get some minor fluctuations, whether we have an issue done on, you know, with one of the processes at our plants. But year to year, roughly about the same amount of chemicals, yes.
And what specific cost-saving measures did you use for that exactly? Or is that just something where you just, the bid is the cost-saving measure itself?
Yeah, the bid is to make sure that we get the most economical for, for that year.
And I, I mean, I, you know where I am on this, but I just wanted to make sure that I knew, or at least people knew specifically what you were doing to, you know, make sure that we're as efficient economically as we can be with, with the water rates and sewer rates at the same time.
Without a doubt. So, another, another thing that we do between the two departments, you know, if you look over. if you look over the years, our contractors' costs for repairs have drastically gone down. That's because water department assists sewer with, with excavations and stuff for repairs that they need to do. And our sewer division assists water.
Counselor, as you wanted asked, and you answered with the debt service being one of the primary things, but we also have another cost that's on, that's consistent is the fact that we have to, we no longer have an incinerator for the sewage waste and we have to ship it out to, I believe it's Connecticut now?
There's, there's really three facilities that we ship it out to, one's Cranston, one's Nogatuck, Connecticut, as you said, which is one of the big facilities around, and then also Turnkey, New Hampshire, we send cake.
What's, what would be the, let's just say hypothetically that we didn't have to ship it out. What would that bring, what would that cost bring us down to?
So, and this is going back some time, the insh, the incinerator was shut down March of twenty sixteen. Prior to the incinerator going down, our electrical and disposal cost and gas cost to run the incinerator per year was roughly about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We currently spend for disposal is a total of two point four million. So it was a large, you know, and the incinerator was shut down due to new regulations put in place by EPA. So that is.
Is there anything at all that we are looking to do, going, going, using the term long-term? Where are we going with that? Because I mean, that's a significant increase.
Oh, without a doubt, so right now down at our.
Bless you.
Wastewater Treatment Plant, we are completing Contract One and will be, we're bidding out currently Contract Two of our wastewater treatment plant, we call it Contract Two. That's the reconditioning of all of our de-watering facilities on the plant. So what that'll help us do is be able to reduce the amount of water and thicken the sludge that we send out. That would be less trucks that would need to leave the facility, the less trucking assist in reducing the cost of it. The other thing that, that has been looked at with multiple other communities within the region, because sludge disposal isn't just a Fall River issue and I, you know, I know Mr. Perry talks about, talks about.
Regional.
Yeah, talks about the solid waste disposal, but our sludge disposal is, is the same thing.
I'm always going to remember Joe Camaro saying, send it to Barnstable.
Yeah, so, you know, some places are taking it as far as upstate New York.
Yeah.
That don't have the local, I call them local, but Connecticut or Rhode Island places to be able to dispose of. So in the future, what would be, what would be good, and it was looked at by a neighboring community to potentially do a regional sludge disposal facility. That may be something, it's something that I've kind of just started looking into to see whether there were any partners around that would be willing to do that at a current solid waste facility or something like that, so.
I'm very layman on all this, I, I obviously do not have the experience that you have in this and, and Mr. Perry, when I talk to him about recycling and our solid waste. So I don't want to act as an expert on everything like most people try and try to do when they, when they talk to you. But I have read up a lot on anaerobic digestion. It does, I have seen some communities using that to reduce the cost of sewage and things like that. Is that an option? Is that a possibility in this area?
Is it, yes. At our facility, no.
Okay.
Our facility is an extremely tight facility, as it is just for the treatment process that we have ongoing. You know, there's potential changes in our treatment process depending on the NITD's permits coming in the future. With neighbors directly to our north and also to our east, large apartment complex across the street. Anaerobic digest is, when they function, when they're functioning well, everything is good. When they don't function well, if you've, you probably have not, but if you've ever smelt anaerobic digester that has gone bad, you'll never forget the smell.
Okay.
And neither will our neighbors, so.
Okay, I, I have no more questions, thank you, I yield.
Thank you, anything further, any counsel?
Just one thing on that, you know, somewhere else within the city or within the region, that would definitely be a possibility, so.
Okay, great.
Counsel Poirot?
Couple of things, have we looked any further into selling our water? I know we have pipes that go up towards Swansea and Somerset, have we looked, looking into that?
Well, so we'll look, again, we're looking to sell water to anybody who, who is, who will, would be willing to take it. Hundred and ten percent, as you know, we have intermunicipal agreements with Freetown, Westport and North Tiverton Fire District. I have been hearing that there is discussions within Westport of expansion, which, which would be a possibility. Somerset, we verified that the line underneath the river is good and that's a good sense. Somerset right now does have an excess of water since their power plant closed down. But there are other communities beyond Somerset that are looking for water, so there is discussion, but that's going to be. Yeah, that's going to be a process.
As long as we're having discussion. And, you know, when I'm looking at averages for the year, I think that these are off because I think that everybody's going to pay a lot more with water because people have been home, they're working from home, they're using more water, kids have been home from school. So they're using water, they go to the bathroom at home now, so it's, you know, been a lot. My last question is on the stormwater going up, and this is to Mrs. Sahadi. When we put in a stormwater fee, it was to pay off the CSO, how much more do we have to pay on the CSO? You don't know?
I don't, I don't have that answer this evening, but I can tell you as far as the CSO goes, we have a number of projects that haven't even begun that will be part of the CSO. So we will be paying CSO debt service for quite some time.
I'd like to know how much we have on that, when you think of it, show me the number.
Yes, well, and just, I'll, I'll.
And hopefully some of the money that we're getting will be able to be used towards, I'd like the federal government to pick up our whole CSO tab.
The, the money that we're receiving, it's, it's very clear in the guidance, it was very clear in the law initially, it will not be used for debt service, it cannot be used for debt service, it can be used for future projects.
So if we have future projects?
That's correct.
At least you can use that money for that.
That's correct.
What were you going to say, Mr. Phil, and I'm sorry?
So I was, I was just going to touch on the, on the CSO a little bit. You know, I'm sure the council, most of the councilors are well aware that the city is underneath a, a federal court order in relation to CSOs and CSO discharges. That's a, still an open court order, which has multiple amendments to it. So that's directly related to the discharges of the CSO. Over the years, we have made great advances with minimizing those discharges in multiple ones of our base, of our basins and our areas. The, there are still ones that need to be addressed. We have the Birch Street, which is still above the three-month storm, which is required within the court order that we get underneath it, so the Birch Street drainage area, City Pier Drainage Area, Alton Street Drainage Area, as well as Middle Street, Ferry Street is still a bit of active over the three-month storms. So we've done, out of the nineteen CSOs that we've originally had, we've reduced down to seventeen. We've controlled a number of those and we're going to be working on that as.
I'd love to see Stafford Road, get something done there, Stafford Square, I should say, not Stafford Road.
Yeah.
Stafford Square's a nightmare.
So Stafford Square, we just did finish a, an extremely comprehensive study of potential fixes for that. In our integrated plan that we did, that we did four years ago, it was laid out within there. Repair for that was somewhere in the sixty million dollar range. The, the latest study that we just completed, which went a lot more in-depth into conceptual design and flows of the whole entire drainage basin and analysis of the drainage basin, is still somewhere within that range.
Thank you, with that I yield.
Yeah, anything further?
Motion table?
Motion table made by Counsel. Seconded by Counsel Deion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So voted.
Thank you, Counselors.
Item five is to be lifted from the table if the committee so chooses, it's the salary schedule changes. And Madam Clerk has let me know that no changes have been sent down to the council, it's been resubmitted as is.
So.
So we'll leave it tabled.
So, well, may I? So what you, what you did receive in terms of changes were the titles for the Director of Cemetery and the Director of Parks. It is the administrative feeling that the not to exceed is certainly the way to include salary rates for all of the salary non-union department heads that are included in Section fifty dash three oh one, as well as fifty dash three oh two, those contract employees, so that the administration has the ability to offer somebody a salary not to exceed these amounts, rather than being pigeonholed into a step process where individuals would be receiving step increases based on the table as opposed to based on performance. In addition, someone coming in from the outside or even someone being promoted from inside would automatically get step one. And in a lot of instances.
I'm just going to hold you right there, Mrs. Sahadi, I apologize, I thought you were going to say something very brief. We have not lifted this from the table, is there any, do we have a motion that, do we want to lift it from the table? Do we want to keep it tabled? It's going to remain table, thank you. Item six, resolution to discuss banning balloon releases in the city of Fall River, and this was adopted September tenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Motion referred to full council.
Second.
Are they still out in the hall? Are they still in the hall, Mr. President? Is Morton Civics class still out in the hall? Could you ask them to come in, please? Thank you. Just got to wait for them to come back in. So the original version that was put in in September twenty nineteen reads, whereas balloon releases are used for celebrations as well as memorials, and whereas all those, these traditional balloon releases may be beautiful and inspiring, the remains of the balloons and ribbons are harmful to the environment and often cause irreparable damage and or death to wildlife and marine life. And where are there various other alternatives such as bubbles, confetti made from leaves and flowers, tree plantings, and other biodegradable options? Now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation convened to discuss banning balloon releases in the city of Fall River. We did hear from quite a few members of the Morton Generation Civics. One of the Morton Generation Civics classes that Mr. Blanchett has, and it's the eighth grade. I appreciate you all coming in and speaking. As Counselor Nseet once said, that is not an easy thing to do, it's not easy for adults. And I certainly wouldn't be doing that in, in eighth grade, but I appreciate that this class wanting to make valuable change in the city. This has been sitting in this committee for almost two years now. And the reason being, it was never pushed to be on the agenda for an ordinance to go through is, the general consensus was usually, you know, we have much more important things to take care of. And I don't disagree with that, however, this is important too. And if you don't have all of the different pieces that make up a, a good place to live, you won't have it, I don't know how I'm trying to say this, but you need all of the pieces to make it a, a good place to live. And this is one of them, it involves the, our wildlife, it involves our marine life, and it involves our environment with litter. We are very aware of the litter that's in the city, people complain about it often. Litter and dumping has been a, a constant complaint since I've been a counselor, and this adds to it as well. So I, I absolutely appreciate you all coming in, you taking on this issue and bringing it to light again. And I, I will say one thing, and I, I did have the pleasure of speaking to two of Mr. Blanchett's classes. This one included with a friend of mine who gave them options for other alternatives. And I said the story to this class was several years ago, when there would be a comment on social media that there was going to be a balloon release because somebody had passed away, and unfortunately, it's usually somebody young. My dear friend would be one of a hundred comments and her comment would be, you know, please don't do this, it's bad for the environment. And she meant it in the nicest way possible. But there'd be ninety-nine other comments telling her to be quiet, mind your business, let them do what they wanted. Fast forward to, you know, just a few months ago, and there's another one of those memorials being planned, balloon releases being planned. And now there's ninety-nine comments agreeing with her. And one comment saying, you know, let them do what they want. So people are definitely more aware of the impacts it has on animals and marine life and they're more aware of the impacts it has to our environment. Anything from the Counsel, Counsel Lee?
I just wanted to make a point that I, I will always, personally will always support environmentally focused ordinances or laws or any kind of things that we can do to try to help the environment. However, it doesn't stop here, the, the laws that we, we already have a lot of littering ordinances in place, they get broken all the time. It's frustrating to see, I'll go out there, been out there for years doing cleanups.
Thank you.
You clean it up, people throw it all over, all over again. Don't, don't get discouraged when you see, when you continue to see balloons out there. Don't get discouraged by that, keep fighting, keep doing what you need to do. Spread the word, talk to businesses, talk to business owners, talk to property owners. The more city pride you show, the more it's going to spread. But there is just a lot of people out there that, for whatever reason, would rather just throw their stuff out the window, throw, dump it into the parks, throw, dump it into the woods. And, and we, the people who do care, like myself, like you, like yourself and many people here, we get frustrated. It, it's, it's a frustrating task to care about your environment and, and it's not always going to be easy. Tonight, today will, it will be easy because we're all on board with it, we all do care about that. We care about any kind of litter, whether it be balloons or styrofoam or anything like that at all. But this is a long road, it's a long, hard road, and it's going to take a lot more than just this. It's going to take a lot of effort from all of us in the city as well to just, to just keep on pushing that message that we got to have some pride in the city. It's, it's really bad, where, you know, Counsel Lady LeBeau mentioned it, is that we are getting this every single day. Way before I ever became a city council, I've seen it every single day. It's a nightmare, it's really bad, and I don't want to sugarcoat it because I think what you guys are doing is great, but it's a fight, it's a real fight. So I just wanted to mention that and thank you for coming up here and, and doing what you're doing, so, I yield.
Counselor Nseet, one?
Madam Chairwoman, so are we going to entertain a motion to just have a ordinance drafted by the council?
Would be drafted, we would be sending it to KP Law, to be drafted.
I'll make that motion to, second, request KP Law draft a ordinance banning the releases of balloon for celebration purposes.
Motion made by Counsel Kadim to send a, a request to KP Law to write a draft ordinance banning balloon releases in the city. Seconded by Counsel Lee, any further discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you to everybody that came down, and thank you, I noticed that it's all the ladies that came down. Mr. Blanchett, thank you very much, you, you have a good group there, right behind you, thank you all.
Counsel Deion?
Thank you. I'd also like to thank you all for coming and say that you definitely have my support as well. Any endeavor that helps people or animals absolutely is in my wheelhouse. So thank you for being concerned and, and putting your best foot forward to try to make changes in the community. Secondly, I'd like to say, if we're going to send this to KP Law, do we need to send it to full council? We just voted a minute ago, we just motioned to send it to full council.
Yeah, but there wasn't a second for that and we didn't vote on it.
Oh, I thought there was.
We're just sending it to KP Law and we'll also have a motion to table it in, in ordinance.
Okay.
So that one comes back. Thank you, anything further? So a motion made in, seconded by, made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Lee to send the request for the draft ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted. I also need a motion to table.
Motion to table, so.
Second.
Motion to table made by Counsel Lee, seconded by Counsel Deion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted. Thank you.
Um, excuse me. Should we do a motion to table and refer it back to the ordinance committee?
It will, it will automatically come back to us.
I thought we've had times where it didn't work.
Because we didn't table it.
Okay.
We just sent it out. Thank you. Item seven is a communication. It's a request for the authorization to enact a compost recycling program. This was referred to Corporation Council September eighth, two thousand and twenty. This is just like the last meeting where we had it for the single-use plastic bags. All we need to do is ask Madam Clerk to send a copy of the letter sent to Corporation Council to KP Law.
So moved.
You know, do you need a vote on that, Madam Clerk?
No, because it was already sent to Corporation Council.
Okay. Anything further?
So are we gonna table this item so that we can have it discussed?
Oh, yeah, so we do need to table it. Madam Clerk, does it state, is it already ta- we're not doing anything with it. We're just sending a copy, correct?
Correct.
So we don't need to table it? It remains tabled?
Are we not entertaining the request?
Point, point of information.
Yes.
We would have to lift it from the table first.
We don't.
No?
No, it's, it's how it was explained to me by Madam Clerk at the last meeting.
Okay.
Counsel Seaweed, did you say something? Sorry.
No, I, I mean, we would need to draft language to establish a compost recycling program, right? An ordinance? So that's why I'm asking. I mean, we're, we're sending, we're just trying to understand what we're sending to KP Law.
We're sending.
It's more than just a letter, right? It's for them to, to draft something for us, right? Language on the compost.
Yes, and that's what was sent to our Corporation Council, wasn't it, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it was already sent to Corporation Council.
Okay, so we're gonna send it to.
Just a copy.
Copy to KP Law for them to work on.
So who's, who's drafting?
KP Law.
Okay.
So I have a question on that.
Yes.
Is KP Law now drafting all of our ordinances? If so, what are we paying Corporation Council for?
Well, um.
Just a question.
Absolutely. This has been, this was referred to Corporation Council September eighth, two thousand and twenty. We don't have it back, along with several other things. They're just too busy to get these items back to us.
That, that's not a rational excuse, in my opinion. You can't be too busy not to get back what we need to get back.
I, I would agree with you, Counsel, but that's.
I will have a conversation with the mayor about that and perhaps Corporation Council. Can't do the job. I have a problem with that.
Madam Clerk does have a list of.
I agree that it needs to be done. Things shouldn't be sitting around the way that they are, so send it off. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Madam Clerk does have a, a list of items that we had sent, the committee has sent to Corporation Council that haven't come back.
Then maybe he needs to come down to our council meeting to talk about why these things aren't done, if there's a list. I'm sorry. We all work here. We get paid to do a job. If we can't do a job, then we need to say, hey, this is too much for me. I can't do it. Do I need help? Whatever. But let us know. You can't be sending things and things linger there. I mean, I put in one for just the outdoor dining, to make an ordinance that it's from the first of May, or the thirtieth of May, to the first of November, weather permitting. And we still don't have that. We're what? Already into May.
Do you yield, Counsel?
I yield.
I, I'm actually gonna agree with Counsel and Chair eight, because composting is one of the bigger things we've been talking about. We've been talking about a lot of environmental-related things here, and the cost of trash is gonna be talked about tonight. And I feel as though, I felt as though composting is a, a big, big, big order to reduce our solid waste. So the urgency, you know, there's a sense of urgency for this specific one to get through so that we can at least try to start this program.
Yeah.
You know, so I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
Just.
Counsel Seaweed, one?
Not to sound like a broken record, but I, I do agree with, you know, Counselor Nseet eight. I think when we initially hired counsel for, for the city council was really just to have some type of support staff here. I, I didn't necessarily take it as we were then gonna be using our council to draft everything that is supposed to be required by Corporation Council, right? I think that's the administration. At the, at the end of the day, that's what the individual gets paid for. So we need to get a, get a handle on how many items are outstanding, what, what that list looks like. If it's one or two things, then okay, I can understand we're, we're busy. But if, if we've got a number of items that are outstanding and it's just, we're in a stalemate over here just waiting for things to get returned and so that we can take action on them. I mean, we get a list of outstanding items from all our subcommittees from, from the clerk's office, and I mean, some of them are pretty lengthy. So I mean, we get criticized if we're not closing out the items, and I, I think we just need to stop holding people accountable in terms of what the expectations are. Now, if it's not clear and, and their intent is, or they were under the assumption that since we've got counsel, that we're gonna have our, our council start drafting ordinances. I'll, I'll tell you the forty thousand dollars or what, ten thousand dollars, whatever the, I forget, I forget what the budget was, but whatever the budget was.
Forty thousand.
Is, is not gonna cover, you know, drafting of, of ordinances every other meeting. So with that, I, I would just, you know, I, I'd support just writing a resolution to request the legal council come down and just so we can have a further conversation about this. With that, I yield.
Thank you. I did speak to Counsel President about this because I also was under the assumption that the, the city council, council was to give second opinions and things like that. I mean, I'm fine with using it, you know, to catch up, but we do need to hear from our own Corporation Council, who is supposed to be addressing these issues for us. Did you want to put that in now or did you want to put that in?
No, unless, unless leadership wants to just have the conversation and just request them and figure out when they can come down. I mean, that'd just save us from doing a resolution. But if you feel like a formal resolution's needed, I'll, I'll work with Counsel Pereira after the meeting or in between meetings to get it drafted.
I would put it in as a formal resolution. Anything further? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Counsel Lee, seconded by Counsel Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.